Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on August 4th, Wednesday, new day for a meeting. And I will call this regular meeting of the Miami Township Montgomery County Board of Trustees to order. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unredoubtable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Morse here.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
Mr. Colp.
Here.
Please do announce we have no military casualties to read. Chief Stegelmeyer, first responder casualties.
Good evening, Board. The following is the first responder casualty list for the period of July 21st through August the 4th, 2021. Reserve Deputy Sheriff Tom Hubler, Childress County Sheriff's Office, Texas, end of watch July 17th, 2021. Detective Jeremy Brown, Clark County Sheriff's Office, Washington, end of watch July 23rd, 2021. Firefighter Thomas Royds, Lower Marion Fire Department, Pennsylvania, end of watch July 24th, 2021. Deputy Sheriff Philip Campus, Kern County Sheriff's Office, California, end of watch July 25th, 2021. Canine Jazz, Savannah Police Department, Georgia, end of watch July 25th, 2021. And Canine Rex, Michigan State Police, Michigan, end of watch July 25th, 2021.
Everyone could please join me in recognizing a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to welcome all of our guests. And we have no formal presentation scheduled. I will start the meeting with making a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colp.
Aye.
New business. Chief Stegelmeyer, you motion to approve a liquor permit.
Thanks again, Board. Tonight in your package, you've had an application for a new D1 permit from the Blue Crab Juicy Seafood, Inc., at 8901 Kingsridge Drive and Patio. This is a new application in the D1 just for the Board's information is for beer only for on-premise consumption or in original sealed containers, or for carryout only until 1:00 AM. We find no reason to contest this permit, and I'm open for any questions from the Board, if you have any.
Do they already have a liquor permit, or is this completely new?
They do. They have been back and forth with us before. And what happens is, if you remember correctly, Juicy Blue Crab applied for several different permits. And what it happens is, is if they fill up, they will be denied. A permit will be denied, a different type of permit. So as they start opening up or availability in the township, they can reapply for that one. In this case, the D1 came back open. So that's why the new application.
Thank you.
Chief, you also have Resolution 55.
Again, Board, in your packet, Resolution 55 is for reappropriation of funds to the police department accounts, 209-9112-5381 and 209-9112-5382. The original 2021 appropriation did not include enough money to cover for the insurance, liability insurance on their property. And this is just going to give us a little more money so we can pay that bill. It was an unexpected expense this year. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Hearing none. Mr. Mayberry, you have Resolution 56, 2021.
Thank you. Yes, I do. Good evening, Board. I too have a need to increase our road and bridge budget. One item being the liability insurances Chief Stegelmeyer had discussed for the police department. And the second item for road and bridge would be to cover parts for all township vehicles and equipment for the remainder of this year. So I have explained some history in the memo I have attached with the resolution, and would be happy to go over any of this information with you if needed.
My only thought is, is if these are one-time expenditures, let's make sure we make note of that so we don't reappropriate too large a budget next year. Or if they're going to be reoccurring and potentially increasing, let's make note of getting the right amount in the budget for next year right away.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. McCord, you have Resolution 57, 2021.
Yes, that's a resolution to switch our, from our surety bond coverage on the elected officials and key members of staff, that we currently have independent or individual bonds on each of those positions. This is a new coverage that's offered through O-TARMA, and it will turn it into more of an insurance policy, and will allow us to better manage the transition between terms and whatnot to ensure we've got, we maintain the coverage consistently throughout. That had been a bit of an issue in the past years ago, so we're taking a step to kind of streamline that and make it a little more efficient. Be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Could you tell us a little bit about the cost difference between the present surety bonds and this insurance?
The cost will be roughly the same. It'll be more of just saving the administrative burden, I guess would be, it's an overstatement, but it would be, when we have a transition, we need to make sure those bonds are in place before the person takes office. And in the past, we have, that has been a timing issue to get all that stuff back to us, plus with new hires. So this really is a neutral expense for us. It's really just more on the housekeeping side of the House administratively.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, Mr. Snyder, you have Emergency Resolution 60-2021.
Good evening, Board. We do have an emergency resolution on the agenda tonight. This is dealing with the opioid settlement agreement that has been entered into by majority of the states in the US with the distributors and manufacturers of opioids as part of the opioid epidemic that has been occurring the last few years. This is an emergency resolution because there is a deadline for local jurisdictions in Ohio to participate in the settlement agreement of August 13th, which is prior to our next upcoming meeting. Unfortunately, we did just learn of this last night as this information was finally put out. So you do have in your packets a copy of the resolution along with a couple of exhibits, both the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding, which is a memorandum of understanding put together by the Governor of Ohio and the Ohio Attorney General for municipalities and jurisdictions in Ohio to basically define how the settlement funds would be distributed in the state of Ohio. Summary of that is that 30% of those settlement funds would be distributed to local governments. And then there are formulas for each of the individual local governments from there on in terms of how much they might receive. So this resolution then would adopt the MOU, essentially adopting our understanding and consent with that distribution of funds, and then also authorize the township administrator to enter into a participation agreement for the settlement funds. If we do not, obviously jurisdictions have the right and the authority to not enter into the settlement agreement and to pursue litigation, which was what brought about many of these agreements. A number of jurisdictions around the state and around the country had pursued individual litigation at the state, county, and municipal level with the distributors of opioids. This would allow jurisdictions to either enter into the settlement that's been arranged at the national level, or pursue, again, litigation on their own individually. But at this time, Miami Township had not pursued individual litigation on this topic, so we are presenting this resolution for your consideration tonight. There's a lot of information. Unfortunately, again, we did not have a lot of time to provide this to you. We did have our law director review this material today. We did not find any items that would, I guess, cause us to not enter into the agreement outside of, again, if it was the desire of the Board to pursue litigation on our own. So obviously, we are giving up that right by entering into a settlement agreement. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you may have. Obviously, the final amount of funds that each jurisdiction will receive is dependent upon how many of the litigating parties that are, were part of the original litigation enter into the settlement agreement. If they achieve certain levels of those parties entering into it, there are incentives built into the agreement that will increase the amount of funds that all of the jurisdictions receive. So obviously, if not enough of the litigating parties enter into the settlement agreement, then the settlement agreement will simply go away and the litigations will continue.
Any questions?
No. Thank you, Mr. Snyder, for taking the time today to bring this to our attention and doing the due diligence to review these documents. Came on us rather suddenly, and does have a due date of the 13th of August for us to potentially accept or reject this offer. So thank you for that.
We'll now move into the public comment period of the meeting. Anyone wishing to come forward and make a public comment, come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you have up to five minutes to address the Board of Trustees.
My name's Paul Baker. I live at 299 Ondale Drive. Are we ever going to come back on newsletter?
We publish a-
Please?
We publish an online newsletter monthly, but-
A printed newsletter? I'm 87 years old. I'm computer literate. I don't use a computer. So would this just leave me out?
Unfortunately, at this time, yes. We've determined that the value of a printed newsletter is not worth the expense. We were spending upwards of $30,000 annually to mail newsletters that the majority of our citizens said they didn't read. So we felt an online newsletter is a better form of that. But you're welcome to come here every month, and we'll print one off for you.
Well, it don't make much difference anyhow, because there's always 30 days behind anyhow. So it never got out on time. Another thing, we had a little bit of misunderstanding, I think. As I left here the last time before, you said that all the money that was obtained through the license, and the license and the gas was used, I don't, used on the roads. I don't doubt you a bit on that. Only problem is that like, we didn't get anything done down the Heber Platts because we spent all the money up in Swamp or Spring Valley Road, whatever you want to call it, because it's not your fault. Prior people adopted that road, and that was Swamp Road. Now, wouldn't that give you a clue that the damn thing didn't have any base under it? Oh, well, anyways. So we spent all our money up there, we didn't get anything done down on the Heber Platt. And the amount of people down at Heber Platt and what they're paying for taxes, I think we're getting a very bad shake. I'm going to find out here how many people and their addresses, everybody down there, and I'll see if I can do something about that. So anyways, another thing is that on, I think June 18th, at 9:30 in the morning, I have a friend of mine that monitors all the police calls and fire calls, and he called me and he says, "You got an ambulance coming at 2104. Man had heart, had a heart attack. He took some nitro, and it didn't help him." So, oh, wow. So they live right across the street. So I go on the porch. 20 minutes later, now the firehouse is a mile and two tenths from there, and Marine City is an hour, is just about another 200 feet down the road. And finally, West Carrollton shows up. No police car, the guy having a heart attack, what, no fire truck, what the hell is going on? I guess you just lay there and die? Then that same day, about three hours later, we had a DB on Ondale called in, dead body. We had fire trucks, ambulances, four police cars, or three police cars, and an ambulance. Well, there was nothing, I pulled up there on the left because he's dead. And I just don't think, what's going on on that? I don't understand that, but I don't understand a dispatcher on that crazy stuff. So isn't there something going to be done about that or something? Don't come through and tell me that's a fire district thing, because you people paying the bill for it.
No, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and I asked the administration to look into the details of it, because it is disturbing when we hear from a resident that there was an emergency call and the Miami Valley Fire District didn't respond. So my initial question was, why was it West Carrollton? And these are the details I can share with you. The call came into the 911 center at 14:48 hours, and that there was a medical emergency at the address that you shared. West Carrollton was dispatched at 14:49 because all of the Miami Valley Fire District medics were already engaged in calls. There was a call at 14:11, 14:21, and 14:28. So we had three different medics already out. West Carrollton stepped in and covered for us, and was actually on site in, it's in here somewhere, I think something like eight minutes.
Six minutes.
Six minutes. At 15, they were, and at 15:13, the medic was en route to Kettering. So, you know, again, I wish that our Miami Valley folks were available, but West Carrollton was covering, and it does appear that the service was an acceptable time. The time the medic left their station to arrive at Ondale was six minutes. So later in the day, when you heard of your other call of the dead body, as you refer, all of our medics were back in the, in the office ready to serve, so.
You'd think somebody said they took the nitro pills, and they had no response to it. You know the man's in trouble. That's a good sign, truthfully. I was a paramedic at one time for township. And where in the hell was the fire engine then to respond on it? Where was a police officer, somebody? I'm 87 years old. I can't do anything anymore. If I bend over a little, I'd fall over. But I just, that just seemed like that's, out of all the emergency services, the fire department, the ambulance, the police department, somebody should have been there to help me out. Then a dead, a dead body down the street, about five houses down, they have those, everybody's there. That's crazy. That don't even make sense, does it? Or does it?
Well, sir, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Your five minutes is up. Again, for the particular call, it was an unfortunate time that all of our medics were covered, but there was somebody there on site in six minutes.
What you're saying, unfortunate at the time, you know, you can't program a heart attack, it's going to happen. You can't say, "Call the fire department, you got a medic ready because I'm going to have a heart attack." No, it don't work that way. You don't understand that, I guess. Or maybe you do understand it.
I do understand, sir. Thank you for coming.
So anyways.
Sir, I'm sorry to cut you off. Your five minutes are up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
But I've been up here several times before. I've seen people up here rattle on for half an hour or better. But thank you for reminding me of that.
You're welcome.
I will definitely think of that of you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward? Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's John Stafford, and my address, my business address is 2555 Miami'sburg Central Road. I'm the CEO of Stafford Jewelers. And I've got a prepared statement. I'm going to try to, it's tough to have an intelligent conversation in five minutes, but I'm going to try to do this, and if I go over, I apologize in advance. First of all, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and to speak before you as I seek help and assistance. I'm here tonight before the trustees to ask for your help. I am asking the trustees to consider granting a temporary variance of enforcement until December 26th, 2021, of the sign ordinances 4101 and 4106. The big question I pose for the trustees tonight is this. Will the Dayton Mall Business District survive, or will it follow the lead of the other failing malls, past and present? Those shopping districts that survive this economic crisis will be the innovators who think outside of the box and do what a Marine would do. Improvise, adapt, and overcome. Everyone has a solution for fixing the Dayton Mall retail problem. However, all the experts failed to consider that it all falls apart at the fingertips of a housewife or a working mom who has discovered she can buy it online. Thus, all of these theories of recovery of the Dayton Mall shopping district fail because of the new consumer buying habits due to the COVID shutdowns. My family business, Stafford Jewelers, has been at the Dayton Mall Business District for the last 36 years. We could not be prouder to be part of this fine and outstanding community of Miami Township. But we need your help. I am not embarrassed to tell you this and ask for your assistance. The whole Dayton Mall Business District, both small and large, needs immediate help. The Dayton Mall Business District is slowly dying. Just make a short drive on 725, starting at 7:41, down to the South Town Center where Catherine's is. There are at least 12 huge signs advertising retail space available that retailers would have been lined up just three years ago fighting over, but yet these spaces remain empty. The last year and a half has been an unprecedented hardship for the business district within, with this unheard of business disruption because of the COVID restrictions. Never in the history of our great state has business has been told when they can open, how long they can stay open, how many customers can eat or shop inside. Like all businesses in the district, Stafford Jewelers has been hurt financially with the lack of customers who are too afraid to go out and shop. As a result, the Dayton Mall area is like a ghost town on some days. This truth cannot be denied. The very survival of the business district is interlaced and intertwine, intertwines with Miami Township as a whole. One does not survive without the other. I have never seen the lack of shoppers like I've experienced the last year and a half. And now there is talk of further business shutdowns, renewed business restrictions, and masking requirements from the government. Bad news has been followed by only more bad news. The Dayton Mall bankruptcy announcement was a dagger in the heart of the business district and the township, only adding and piling on to the problems we as merchants face to attract customers into the business district. The fate of the Salem Mall is the monster under the bed. No one wants to see repeated here, but it is happening here. Action by the trustees is needed now, not later. Vacancy rates are up. Non-payment of rents are up. Non-payment of sales taxes are up. At an, non-payment of sales taxes are at an all-time high. The business district is in serious trouble and needs the help of the trustees. These three, these three key indicators are the canary in the coalmine. The township, along with every business owner, is in this together. We as a community can and must solve this financial disaster together if the business district is to survive and flourish. The fate of the business district is in the hands of each of the trustees before me. What I'm asking the trustees to do is consider creating the Moratorium Relief Act. The trustees can do this at a zero cost, can look at this as a zero-cost township aid package for all the businesses within the district, at a no cost to the taxpayers. It is a win-win for the township and the business district. Allowing temporary signs on each proper, each business owner's property through December 26th to promote sales will enable the business district to survive and recover. This temporary, no, this temporary non-enforcement of the existing sign ordinance does no harm and is in the township's best interest to help the business district's financial recover. The very heart of Miami Township is the mom-and-pop small businesses. Their survival is paramount to the slow and painful recovery of the Dayton Mall area. It is within the power of the trustees to grant this temporary request.
Thank you, sir. Your five minutes is up.
You've been up for some time according to my watch.
I would like to be able to-
I'm in favor of addition or what? Go ahead.
I would like to be able to finish if I could.
I think your request has been heard in respect to Mr. Baker, who was given about 5:20. I've given you 5:20 as well. And I think your request for a, consider a temporary moratorium on signs ordinance to create and allow temporary signs through December 24th was heard by each of the trustees. And should any of the trustees want to bring that forward as a motion at a future meeting, they have the opportunity to do that.
Well, I'm a little disappointed in the fact that I have, you know, a page and a half more. I asked to be put on the agenda rather than be on the public comments. I mean, we're trying to have an intelligent conversation.
I appreciate that, sir. I do appreciate that. I'm only going with the agenda that was approved, and you were not presented as a formal presentation. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward to make a public comment? Hearing none? We will close, close the public comment period. We will go into consideration of votes and resolutions and motions.
I will make a motion that we approve the, excuse me, liquor permit for Blue Crab Juicy Seafood.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 55-2021, a resolution to amend and appropriation of funds for 2021.
I'll second the motion.
Just a correction, that's 56, 2021. I think you said 55.
No, 55 is the police. 56 is the road.
There's two different ones.
Oh.
Yeah, 55 is the police one, and then 56 is the road.
I stand corrected, yes, 55. Yeah, because we did the motion. Okay, good. All right, 55-2021, any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 56, 2021, a resolution to approve an amended appropriation for road and bridge funds for 2021. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colp.
Aye.
I'll make a resolution to approve, make a motion to approve Resolution 60-2021, an emergency resolution to adopt the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and accept the material terms of the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July 21st, 2021 National Opioid Settlement Agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that this is a good opportunity for the township. We would not have individually litigated this matter and the effect of the opioid crisis in our community. It would be hard to prove any funds that we can put to an appropriate purpose arising from this settlement would be appropriately used and a benefit to the township without an investment, we would likely not recover.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 57-2021, a resolution to authorize the purchase of employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty coverage in lieu of surety bonds. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colp.
Aye.
We are now moving into a public hearing. I will make a motion to open public hearing for zoning case number 447-2020, I'm sorry, -21. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colp.
Aye.
Zoning case number 447-21 is now open. The following will be in the order, the hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report. All proponents, those in favor, will be given an opportunity to speak. All opponents, those opposed, will be given an opportunity to speak. A time limit of three minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. When you come forward, give your name and address for the record. The Board will close the public hearing prior to taking any final action. The Board will now hear a report of staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this meeting been met?
They have.
Do you have a recommendation for the Miami Township Zoning Commission? Would you please review your report at this time?
I do, Board. I would be happy to do that. Thank you. The one public hearing case for you tonight, ZC 447-21, is a proposed text amendment to Article 45A of the Miami Township Zoning Resolution. This is the article that regulates landscaping within the township. The proposed modification is intended to clarify the instances in which a land use, or a landscape plan is required based on land use, and what instances a landscape screening zone is required within a larger landscape plan, again, based on differing use types. Board, you've been provided with a full draft of the legislative update. We will go through a quick legislative summary. Three sections within the larger article are being affected by this proposed update. Section 45A01, first, the landscaping plan portion of Article 45A. Currently, the code prescribes specific zoning districts that require a landscape plan, such as the B business districts, I industrial, O office districts, and so on. The proposed update instead proposes listing land use types that would require a landscape plan. This would bring back requirements for landscaping tied to a specific use type, to then tie it to use types that are more impactful or more intense, which is sort of a portion of the intent of landscaping in addition to, of course, having an appealing township, but, but creating landscaping to break up impervious surfaces, larger structures, again, with more impactful uses. One of the large causes of this, currently, our code prescribes, again, to B, I, O- One of the, the large causes of this, currently, our code prescribes, again, to B, I, O, and other zoning districts typically that are more commercial districts. One key use type that is left out of the current code is multifamily housing buildings that are located in a standard residential district, such as the R6 zoning district, is a multifamily district that permits multifamily housing, but also permits single-family residential units. That was intentionally excluded to not require landscape plans for individual, single-family residences, but again, did exclude multifamily homes or multifamily housing projects. So the intent here would be to specifically cite use types such as multifamily housing. Additionally, there was a clarification added that landscape plans have some design flexibility within a plan development. It is alluded to other where, in other locations in Article 45A, but it was specifically called out in 45A01, right at the onset of the section. Section 45A03, landscaping zones, there are a number of landscaping zones, impervious surface zones, building coverage zones, and one of these is buffer screening zones between zoning districts. Again, an instance where multifamily housing would be excluded if the, if the property was zoned R6 multifamily. So again, this would change the instances in which a screening zone as part of a landscape plan is required to be tied directly to the more impactful land use types. Lastly, Section 45A07, building impervious surface area expansions. In certain cases where a non-conforming site is being modified, Article 45A may require that additional landscaping be planted up to a certain percentage of full compliance. Article 7 similarly prescribed similar requirements that in most cases require more landscaping than what 45A07 would require. So this would reference back to Article 7 to ensure that sites are coming into conformance where required, and we're not having redundancies in requiring updates. The zoning commission heard this case July 13, 2021, recommended approval with stipulations and a four-to-zero vote. There was conversation around specific language within 45A01. The zoning commission wanted to discuss the language multifamily apartments in the original application draft with a proposal to change that to multifamily housing. That would broaden and cast a wider net to include condominiums and other larger-scale multifamily housing projects, but then to additionally exclude two-family housing from landscaping requirements. Previously, in the application version, which is the screenshot on top, commercial projects including multifamily apartments, as it was originally listed, excluded then agricultural and single-family homes. The zoning commission recommended an update to include multifamily housing instead, to then go on and exclude agricultural properties, single-family residential, and two-family residential properties. So that is the recommendation of the zoning commission. Board, if you have any questions, I would be happy to discuss.
Any questions for Mr. Carlson? Hearing none. Is there anybody in favor of the plan that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none. Any opposed that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case 447-21. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 59-2021, a resolution to adopt a text amendment to the Miami Township Zoning Resolution. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves with stipulations the text amendment to the Miami Township Zoning Resolution under zoning case 447-21 and adopts the zoning commission recommendation. Is there a second?
Are you proposing an additional stipulation in that?
I am not. So did I state that wrong? Because we're, we're accepting their proposal that they added stipulations to, so I'm approving it as it's being presented.
I think we approve it and we adopt the zoning commission recommendation.
I will take that as the motion, and I will be the second. Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colp.
Aye.
All right, we are finished with our public hearing. Department had comments. Any department has wishing to make any comments?
I just have one comment, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Chief Stegelmeyer and all the staff of the Miami Township Police Department last night for a great turnout for National Night Out, so please pass along my thanks to your staff and Leah and Jay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just like to ask Mr. Mayberry to start to think about and look at, I saw in the recent OTA newsletter, that ODOT is coming out with a program offering grants to townships up to $250,000 for sidewalk extensions or culvert relief. So I'm sure you've got some stuff on your to-do list or want-to-do list. There's only $8 million in that fund, so it would be great if we had our grant lined up before the grant even comes out, and then we can adopt it and put it on those forms. So I think the language is due to come out any day.
Yeah, and Snyder, I already just initially discussed this, so we will be meeting.
It's very timely, and I'm sure that we've got a number of very viable projects, but at, at one of the National Night Out neighborhood events, a resident came up and said, "I've long wanted an extension of the sidewalk from Meddler View School toward their neighborhood." And it's a difficult project because it involves a school, it involves Miami'sburg, and it would involve us, so perhaps this could be one of those potential projects to look at. So, thank you for that. Elected official comments. Mr. Newell.
I have none.
Mr. Colp?
Yeah, this is for Chief Stegelmeyer. About a month ago, we received a letter from a retired police, policeman, I believe, concerning the lump sum payment in the contract, recent contract. I was wondering, have we discussed that, or do we need to discuss that?
That's not an issue. We allow the contract person to, that letter came from a version. It is a benefit than anything else, but it is a non-contract issue to police department that you still do it.
Okay, for his, for his benefit, did you say, or?
It's for his benefit or whatever reason. The letter you're talking about is from the retired officer.
Right.
He was no longer contracted himself as for those officers that are still in state of the police department.
Okay.
Retired prior to that day, so that no, there's no effect.
Okay.
For the current contract language was very clear, or you didn't send the contract, that the payment that he was talking about was made for the current members of the bargaining unit. So therefore, his retirement was voluntary, so that might, I don't know, he might retire.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Posey?
Yeah, again, just echoing Mr. Snyder's comments with regards to National Night Out. He did see a lot on Facebook about other organizations, municipalities, areas in the community having national nights out, and they all seem to be at a single site, and the level of coordination done by the, all the aspects of Miami Township with the leadership of the police department, public works, I saw just about everywhere. I saw fire trucks, I think everybody got out and really engaged in the community in a way I didn't see duplicated across the area. I was impressed, and as I've told people, the last few ribbon cuttings or proclamations I've gotten to give, it's exciting to be out and do this government. I was appointed in January 2020 and almost immediately switched to Zoom meetings after we started, and getting out there and participating in the community and seeing the actual effect that the branches of this township have in their community and the affection that they have for it was great. And again, just commend chief, staff, and everybody else that participated.
Thank you, sir. I would echo those same sentiments. It's, I like the format that we have. I like the, that we go to the neighborhoods rather than asking the neighborhoods to come to us, and I think that works out very well. So again, thanks to the staff and the police department for putting that together, and everybody was out and about, so it was great to see everyone. With that, we'll close the elected officials' comments. I will make a motion to go into work session at 6:39 for the purposes of discussing Item A, rezoning of Byers Road, and Item B, the Vienna Parkway traffic study. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colp.
Aye.
Work session, rezoning of Byers Road.
Mr. Carlson is going to lead us tonight in a presentation on the Byers Road topic, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Board. As I walk through a couple of maps here that we'll have on the slides, certainly jump in with any, any thoughts or questions along the way. In this work session, we hope to discuss a portion of Byers Road, a few parcels north of Lyons Road, but primarily south of Lyons Road, parcels both on the east and west side of the corridor. This is a portion of Byers Road that staff has received quite a large number of calls about in the, the past month, past months and, and past year. There is a large amount of zoning districts in a relatively small portion of this corridor on Byers Road. So I hope to discuss some of the history of this corridor and determine the board's thoughts and feelings on potential action to mitigate some of these issues. Just a quick, brief history again. The parcels were originally zoned R7 on the east side of the Byers Road corridor, R3 single-family on the west side. Over time, particularly from the mid-'80s to the early '2000s, a number of requests came in for rezonings of small groupings of parcels within the corridor. That has led to where we are today, again, with groupings of two or three or four parcels, where many residents, many prospective buyers, current owners, aren't exactly sure what their property is zoned for, what they're able to do on their property, what their neighbor is able to do on their property, and has led to a, a great deal of confusion as people are looking to potentially move into the township, or in the case of some office districts, start a business and, and conduct office use within the township. So the, the map on the right, that's showing a number of parcels that are non-conforming in use. Many cases, they are legal non-conforming, in that the property is zoned as an office district, but someone is living there. So that is a legal non-conforming use. However, if after a period of two years, they, they ceased living in that property under our zoning resolution, it would revert entirely to an office district. So someone could feasibly move out of their home, not have sold it for two years, and when they go to sell it again, it is fully an office district, it is not a single-family residence anymore. So there, there are legal non-conforming uses all across the township, but again, due to the history of this corridor, there is a concentration of issues and confusion on this corridor. So part of a potential solution moving forward, and, and part of the reason the properties have been zoned this way over time, in a, in the earlier comprehensive plan, our current comprehensive plan from 2005, 2006, this Byers Road corridor was designated as a live-work office district. Certainly, the intent of that is not to allow or, or to provide for individual parcels to become office within the district. So staff has discussed the potential of assigning a consistent zoning district, the entirety of this corridor, to adopt some set of standards or zoning designation that would be consistent across the corridor, and would provide standards that, again, would provide consistency, so everyone would know what they can do on their property, what their neighbor can do on their property, and that this could be some type of blended residential office district. I think the intent here is it's a transitional district between multifamily residential to the east and an office industrial park in the city to the west. So it is a, a unique corridor within the township, certainly, with, with unique opportunity. We have spoken with a number of the existing office users and business owners on the corridor. They all were generally receptive and open to a conversation about a, a more general, broad rezoning that would affect the entirety of the district. We have spoken with a number of homeowners as well. June 9, we had a, just a quick informational meeting where we invited any homeowner or resident along this corridor to come and, and just generally discuss. It was not well-attended, but we did have a discussion with a number of residents, and we did receive calls before and after from a number of residents who also were generally open, again, with the concept, "Well, I would like to keep living here," or office users to say, "Well, I would like to keep using my office here." So again, the discussion here is, is what could be done, if anything, to create some type of consistency out in this corridor? And again, wanted to kind of discuss with you initially, before we take any action or bring anything to the zoning commission, the board of trustees by resolution, or by motion, or the zoning commission by resolution, has the power and ability to initiate some type of rezoning or text amendment to discuss this corridor, but again, wanted to discuss with, with you all prior to that.
Live-work is not a district identified in the zoning code at the moment, correct?
So we have an RO district, which is a residential office district. Currently, there are no parcels zoned or designated as a RO district, so certainly, a feasible option would be to discuss that existing zoning designation and, and see if it fits currently to the district, or if that could be amended to fit to the district. But again, currently, there's nothing assigned RO.
Yeah, and the current RO is fairly restrictive and limited in terms of what the reality is out in this particular corridor and what people could do under that, so we would have to amend it to provide for what people are actually doing in the corridor. Part of the issue we have is that, I think, 20, 30 years ago, probably closer to 30 years ago now, a number of the residents along the northeast side of Byers had their properties rezoned to office. I think there was a plan at that time, or there thought that they would move out or eventually sell, or somebody was going to buy all of that and turn it into an office development of some type. That never happened. Residents have just continued to live there ever since then, and at this point, they really don't seem to have any desire to move out of there and not maintain it as a residence, but we've had realty offices, dental offices, other things from time to time, but, so really now, it's, it's what do we do going forward? So we don't create a situation where, again, people really can't utilize or sell their property at all because it just isn't falling under the right designation. So this is the one area of the township where we felt there aren't a lot of immediate single-family neighbors to that area, so there would be less objection to having kind of a mix of office and residential development there, if the residents in that immediate strip are okay with that. So it seems over the years that a number of them have, obviously, if you're living out there, you realize you're living along a relatively busy corridor that's become somewhat more commercial in nature, you've got apartments behind you or-
Right, you and I drive this all the time, in particular.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, um, the properties aren't necessarily enviable from a residential standpoint already, right? You've got a 45, 50 mile an hour road, FedEx trucks going back and forth, lots of traffic, would you agree?
Yes.
And so from a business aspect, the lots are too small and probably not deep enough to really attract a lot of business in there. Is that true?
That's true. There's, I mean, there's issues with parking, quite frankly. You know, if you were to have much of a business there, there just isn't a lot of room to, to be able to park or build onto the existing buildings, so.
So I'm not sure what the proposal is. I mean, if it's just to make everyone legal all of a sudden, then fine, but I, I really think that this is a problem, and we have to figure out what the future is, and I don't know that this pushes us that direction necessarily, but I'm willing to hear more as we go forward.
Yeah, my question would be if, if we decided, yeah, this is a great idea, let's go ahead and create this live-work district or RO or whatever, what happens if one of these business-zoned O2 doesn't want that? What then?
Doesn't want to-
Doesn't want to change the zoning, they want to leave it O2.
Well, that's the discussion that we've been having with a number of the, the owners out there, was to make sure that, because we were approached by one property owner in particular, that they wanted to switch from O2 to residential, but we indicated again, "Well, all your neighbors are zoned O2, so we don't want to just have one more lot that doesn't, isn't consistent." So our goal has been to get a consensus of all the residents and business owners out there before doing this, that this is something they would like to do. We believe we have a general consensus at this point from most of them. I mean, we haven't talked to anyone that didn't want to do it, as long as, again, they weren't made non-conforming, so, and forced to either close their business or move out of their residential house. Of course, they wouldn't be forced to do that, it would involve more, what could they do later when they go to sell their property, so.
So I apologize, I'm not sure that my question was answered. I heard the word consensus, that's not unanimous, that we don't know definitively that everyone would be in favor.
We haven't heard from absolutely everyone.
What would be the, what would be, what would happen if one individual said, "No, I don't want to change my zoning?"
Well, that would be a decision that we would have to make at that point. Do we force them into a new district? Although, again, the goal was to create a district that wasn't going to-
Change any of them.
Remove any of their rights.
So the thought is, is that if we can work this creatively and create the district, it's not going to impact anybody other than in a positive way?
Correct, but.
Gives them more flexibility to either keep it as a, a small office or have it as a residence.
But if there is a desire to have this be just office or just residential in the future, then you would be looking at having to obviously, you know, ultimately get properties conforming to that. So right now, we have a situation where someone that had an office property would like to sell it as a residential property. And they can't do that today because it's been used the last 10, 20 years as an office development, so.
Unless they got it, that particular thing rezoned and it's in the middle of the O2 and it's got, so it makes the map even uglier.
Create more of the same issues, so.
There's a park at the, I'm going to screw this up, the northeast corner of Lyons and Byers, correct? That was at least at one point under consideration for development as a car dealership?
Yes, that's in the city, city of Miamisburg.
Okay, and wouldn't that consideration should be factored into some of this consideration about if it does end up, stays a park? Certainly, residential is not inappropriate around it, but if it becomes a giant commercial space, some of that residential characteristics will be abrogated.
Is it a public park? It's, it's not a publicly owned property, no. It was a private, like a private.
It was originally organized as baseball fields, I believe.
Yeah, I think it was like a corporate playground of some sort.
GM park.
Yeah. Well, again, this is a work session. That's why we wanted to bring this topic to you. We're not looking for, obviously, the board to make a definitive determination tonight, but we wanted to get your understanding of concerns that you would have or directions that you would like to go before we have much discussion with the zoning commission about.
So each one of these properties are currently developed. There's something on each one of these lots?
Yes, yes. Primarily a, a single-family residence. It's either still a single-family residence or has been converted into a dental office or something like that, so.
I'd like to see more of the proposed revisions to RO. That has a lot, reading that, it has a lot of requirements that obviously wouldn't apply on this street. Just to get a better sense of what that neighborhood would look like because it is kind of sandwiched. It's a, it's a weird, busy street to want to continue to maintain as residential. And, but depending on what comes in in the rest of the area may impact the character of that street and the businesses on it.
Yeah, I think there's, my, my opinion on this is there's kind of three roads forward. One, as Mr. Posey said, I'd like to hear more information on how this district would work as long as it's not imposing any restrictions or harming anyone there right now. And where, if we have instances where someone is in an office but wants to sell it as a residence, they, they can't sell it because no one wants it as an office, I would want to make that property sellable rather than being abandoned. And if this does that, then, then I think that might be a good idea. The other concept, and I think, I don't want to speak for Mr. Culp, but if we don't like the way this prop, these properties look or are being used, then we would have to undertake some sort of master plan of acquiring the properties on our own or finding a developer who would want to acquire all of them. And then the whole thing gets rezoned as a planned development or something like that. Neither one of those things are going to happen in the very early future, but, so that, that's my feedback. I see kind of three roads forward. One, we leave it, well, four, we leave it completely alone, we do nothing. Two, we come up with a zone plan that doesn't harm anybody. Three, we think we can buy all the properties and develop them to, to something different. Or four, we hope somebody buys them all and brings us a plan to rezon them all. So that's my feedback. Mr. Culp, any other thoughts?
No.
Anything else, Mr. Carlson?
No, so I think at that point, if, if the board is comfortable, what we could do is take the RO zoning code to the zoning commission as a work session, discussion, discuss an initial draft with them, which of course, we'll come back to you all for final review. If that were the direction you felt was best, then at that point, we could discuss what the, the rezoning piece of that would look like once the district was set in place.
Very good. Item B, the Vienna Parkway traffic study.
All right, I'm going to start off with this and Ms. Good is also here as well. You did a lot of work and spent a lot of time trying to look at all of these spreadsheets and numbers for the Vienna Parkway traffic analysis. So you have a lot of information that was in the cubby for your packets, but we did want to just put up one slide that I think kind of summarizes generally what occurred out there. So in 2019, we did obtain through the county engineer's office, they placed traffic counters down at all of the locations that are shown in red on the map here. There was one additional location which is off of this map, which is on Fox Run Road, but that's not necessarily applicable to what we're discussing here with Vienna Parkway today. That location was done as part of another development case that we wanted to get some counts for, so. And then following the construction of Vienna Parkway in 2021, we also had them place traffic counters down again, at the same locations with one additional location, which is shown on yellow on your map there, just west of Lorian Woods Drive. So in general, I believe the counts show what we felt would likely occur, which is we saw a significant decrease of traffic along Silver Cliff Drive and Pine Grove or Rose Cliff Drive just south of Pine Grove. We saw some additional traffic, particularly at the traffic counter location just west of Rose Cliff because a lot of the traffic that used to turn north onto Rose Cliff to go out on Silver Cliff was now going straight out on Vienna Parkway. So we do have some summary tables here showing you the average, the average daily counts at these locations. So again, as we've noted on our memos, we can't add up all of the counter locations because that's really one vehicle traveling across multiple counters as they drive down the road. So the average counter location along Silver Cliff and Rose Cliff went from 1255 vehicles to 749. That works out to about .87 vehicles per minute down to .52 vehicles per minute. Along Vienna Parkway, again, there was a, an increase from 1,411 vehicles per day to 1,690 vehicles per day on average at any one of those given counter locations. Obviously, some locations had slightly more, some had, had less. So effectively, you had a change in the Silver Cliff, Rose Cliff area, 506. That was a decrease in, in vehicles going through that area or at one of those counter locations and an increase of 279 vehicles per day along Vienna Parkway, which works out to .19 vehicles per minute. So we've got a lot of additional information. Ms. Good is here as well. If you have any questions for her, we can certainly go into more detail here, but we do feel that, that is the general summary of the traffic volumes. She did also supply some speed data as well, which is in your packet. Again, the average speeds, the highest average speed difference was about one mile per hour. So we did not see a, we feel a, a significant increase in the speeds throughout the system. Obviously, again, there are outliers out there. You do have some vehicles that were certainly going faster than that, but the vast majority of the vehicles fall within that range, so. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions or Ms. Good is here as well if you have any questions for her, so.
Ms. Good, anything else that jumps out at you or was surprising in this study?
I don't think so. I think Mr. Snyder covered the majority of it. It was interesting to see how the increase in traffic, well, there was an increase in traffic along Vienna Parkway. It wasn't drastic or necessarily negative. It did take a lot of burden off of Silver Cliff and Rose Cliff, which I think is a positive for those neighborhoods.
Thank you. Chief, any thoughts or comments from the police side of things? I know you've been ramped up some enforcement since this road opened. We see the crews are sitting out there frequently.
No, we're really, the study kind of confirms with some of the speed sign studies we did informally throughout the year. Prior to the Parkway opening, we did a lot of baseline studies with our speed signs and these are very, very consistent to what we were seeing as well. Mr. Snyder and I have also had a conversation about, we knew that the, the increase of the Parkway traffic is primarily going to come from the neighbors, the neighboring streets, which it did. To be honest with you, the traffic complaints have not come through like I thought they were going to, but I'm also trying to keep officers in the area just as a reminder, let people know that we're keeping an eye out. The speeds, the one mile per hour is very negligible when that, since that opened. So I, I'm very pleased with this official study, kind of confirmed what we saw in our unofficial study as well.
Yeah, I would just share and thank everyone, again, the Police Department and our Planning Department for all the work that's been done for sharing this data. I don't, I want anyone in the public to think that our viewing of this is over because clearly, we, we may or may not have a future proposal for the development of the Rivendell area. That may bring additional traffic. We know that the Vienna Springs facility is going to open soon. That may bring some changes. So I think we're going to keep looking at this into the future. But I shared this data with a number of folks at the Vienna Parkway National Night Out last night. Spent a good deal of time there and the overwhelming majority of, of people in the community enjoy the road being open and are in favor of and have appreciated this. And the overwhelming majority of people who live directly on Vienna Parkway are not as pleased because they knew, as we knew, it was going to increase traffic on that. But that road was always designed to be a major connector. One resident mentioned to me, you know, "I moved into this community 25 years ago knowing that that road was going to be finished. I don't know what took so long." And they were actually in favor of it. When I shared this data and I said the highest average speed was 29 miles an hour in, in this one grouping, the response was, "Well, that just can't be right." And I reminded them, "That's an average, so that means half the cars were doing more than 29. We, we don't dispute that there was a speed issue, but, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, we have a speeding issue on every street in our township, do we not?"
Absolutely. There, there's no way to 100% get everybody to conform to the speed limit. And you can go in any single neighborhood, all the way from the Huber Platte down into the Spring Valley area. Every one of those, I've received at least a phone call a time or two where people complained about the speeding. And we try to get around and give as much enforcement and preventative action as well, speed signs and other such measures to try to make everybody aware that we know there's an issue and we're trying to do our best to stay on top of it. While we don't have the resources or the equipment to handle it 100%, we're doing a good job of trying to knock it down the best we can.
I completely agree. Mr. Mayberry, I'd like to, you to bring back a, a formal proposal with cost to put in the speed sensing signs, the, the light up on that road to see what it would cost to put that, where you, how many you would recommend and what the cost would be to put in a speed limit 25 and the, the flashing "Your Speed Slow Down." I see those in a lot of other communities. I think that would be a good addition to that road and possibly a lot of other roads. I, Munger Road, it's 40 miles an hour. The average speed is probably closer to 50. So there are plenty of roads where those things, I know they're not inexpensive, but as we think about our neighborhood investment and innovation fund, that might be a, a good spend of those dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to also encourage revisiting this data at some point because if you look at the total counts between 2019 and 2021, they are lower, which means there's probably a pandemic effect involved in, as these businesses reopen. As people get out again, maybe those numbers need to be revisited. I'd encourage citizens to contact Chief Stegelmeyer as appropriate to address any systemic issues that they see happening so that we can stay on top of this throughout the township.
Excellent. Any further business for the work session? All right, hearing none, I will make a motion to close the work session at 7:04. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
We have no executive session. We will adjourn the meeting at 7:05. Thank you all for coming.